Panel ma prastut garna aunu bhakot cha. Wairla hami bishtare swagat gorne chung. Andi tiu tes pachadi. Tes pachadi hamro question answer rata ba prashno tar ko session ranecha. Aile lai bani motpa aru lai firi ekchuti swagat garna chaanchu. Aajko iyo karikram covid vaccine ko bisay ma ranecha. Hamis sanga kai bishe sagya aru unun cha. Kai bishe sagya aru, dujana bishe sagya aru UPMC hospital bala unun cha. Bani ek jana schoolal hill health center ko doktor unun cha. Andi gorop ka saath malai yo bhanne man lagi racha. Hamra, hamri samajka bhai baini aru pani bishe sagari rukma. Hamila kai kura aru jankari garna aunu bhakot cha. Wairko naam oru bishtare. Hamra karikram ta moderator le gano necha. Tar aile lai bani chai yo karikram kina rakhiyota. Hami aile covid ko prakop ma poriu ane tes pachi. Hamila covid test garna parne stiti aru thiyo. Aba bishtare khoparoo auna thale keshan. Hami kei le tik khoparoo li sakika chong. Kasale pahilo charan ko bani kasale dosha charan ko li saikona sakshun. Tara hami ma dheri jana vekti aru chung. Just ek khop li nu ajay baki nisha. Andi teeti madema pani, hami kotima sanga cha. Kun se vaccine ramro ho, kun vaccine launda thik uncha, kun thik unna. Kasali launu pascha kasali launu ujithunna. Estakura aru dheri jigya saru unasaksha. Tiu bakunale, hami aaj bishe sagya aru baata sunne chung. So we have this program today just to make sure that we have the right information about the vaccines that are available to us in the community. So without further ado, I would like to invite our today's programs moderator, Gita Acharya. And from here, I will let you go, Gita, introducing the presenters or panelists. And I would also like to make an announcement here that we have Ashok Gurung wherever needed or we feel that he is there to make the interpretation. Ashok Gurung, please be ready too. Thank you, Gita Acharya.
Thank you, your uncle for the introduction. I'm really excited to be here today with such incredible speakers. I also feel really fortunate that we are moving on to the topic of vaccines. I remember the last town hall we had was just about covid nineteen. So I'm really glad that we've moved on to this phase of vaccines. So yeah, starting off, we have our speaker, Dr. Tui Buie.
Viruses in the air and how they move from person to person. And so I'm going to give you guys just an overview. If you've already had a town hall about covid, so maybe some of this is a refresher. But just to give you an overview about SARS-CoV-2, which is the causative virus that causes covid nineteen that we talk about. And sort of a little bit about the vaccine and some of the ones that are being developed and that are available. So as I just said, the virus that causes covid nineteen is called SARS coronavirus two, or SARS two. And it was first reported in twenty nineteen and has been transmitting through the world really since the beginning of twenty twenty. And some symptoms, just so everybody is on the same page. What you, if you experience fever, chills, coughing, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, fatigue, headaches, sore throat, congestion, nausea and diarrhea. Those are all signs and symptoms of covid nineteen infection. And I'm sure this is not new for anyone who has been living through the past year. And so just a little bit about how the virus spreads from person to person. This is sort of showing you schematic here. The virus will replicate in your lungs. And so that when you talk, breathe, sing, cough, do any sort of activity, really, you're expelling aerosols that contain the virus. And there are a range of aerosol sizes. Some are really small and they can stay in the air for long periods of time. And some are quite large and they can fall out of the air at a faster rate. They can fall onto surfaces like your phone and act as a fulmate to then do, for then transmission. But the primary mode that we think of for transmission of SARS-CoV-two is, or for covid nineteen is through the air, either inhaling the virus in small aerosols or being close to somebody and sort of just breathing in all of the aerosols that they are expelling at small and large sizes. So what can you do to limit transmission? You can avoid interacting in large groups, being close to somebody, keeping a nice distance away. And then wearing a mask. The mask protects the amount of aerosols that you will release if you are infected. But it also reduces the amount of aerosols that you breathe in. So just to reiterate some of the severity of disease by age. If you are older than thirty, so typically individuals older than thirty have a much more severe reaction to SARS-CoV-two. You're more likely to be hospitalized at higher rates. And the severity of illness that can lead to death is also higher. Luckily, it's a little bit less for kids under five to seventeen or even zero to four. And that the virus does not seem to be as infectious and as severe in these pediatric or in these younger populations. And so again, the best ways to avoid getting the virus right now until you're vaccinated is to avoid crowded situations, decrease close physical contact with people outside of your household. Try not to be in closed spaces because there's a lot of air, a lot of air ventilation, a lot of air circulation and decrease exposure time whenever possible. So how do vaccines work? Really, the topic of today's town hall. So this is just a schematic of the SARS coronavirus. All right, and I'm showing here this teal blob is is known as the spike protein. And this is the target of most of your immune response even when you're infected with the virus. And so vaccines work by not, they don't give you the virus, but they take a little piece of the virus and allow your cells to be exposed to that and give you this little piece of the virus so that you can make an immune response. So what is the immune system and what is the immune response? I like to think of him as the superhero of your body, right? These are the supermans and wonder women that come in and protect you from viruses, bacteria and other pathogens. So there are lots of superheroes out there in the Marvel series as well as in your body. So there are T-cells and T-cells can help make B-cells, which are one of my favorite superheroes. And these superheroes make things that are called antibodies. And we'll talk about that in just a minute. And these antibodies will recognize the virus or the bacteria. And then they also have other things where they can react. Cells that can react to, in case you were infected with a virus of infecting your cells. So these are the superheroes. So what a vaccine does is it makes T-cells and B-cells. You can imagine this is like a superhero T-cell. This is the Superman. This is the Wonder Woman. And they are now primed against this virus because of the vaccine. And they can then protect you in case you are exposed to the virus after vaccination. And so these are the B-cells. B-cells make antibodies. Antibodies can stay in your body for a long period of time. And those are going to recognize the virus. I'm just going to end a little bit with how we got to the vaccines here. Operation Warp Speed has really been in the news a lot. I'm sure you all have heard about it. Basically, what we were able to do at the beginning of the pandemic is get all of our boots on the ground. Scientists and everybody worked together to make this go really rapidly. So things that would normally take years and years to develop and get approved, we were able to do it in a much shorter timeline, not by sacrificing in scientific advancement, but just by working together and removing obstacles in our path. And so instead of it taking six years, we will now have the process in just fourteen months. And so this included a lot of vaccine research that we knew from when SARS-one emerged in two thousand and three and MERS in twenty fifteen. And other vaccine platforms that were licensed, they've been done in large clinical trials. So again, policies have been changed, but the science didn't. So these are very robustly tested for both safety and efficacy. And so this is just the four vaccines that are in almost approval. So Pfizer, Moderna are approved by the FDA for licenses. So those are the ones that you can get now. There's two other ones, AstraZeneca and Johnson &amp; Johnson that have vaccines that are coming up. The important point to remember is that these vaccines, while they're different in the way that they work, they have all been shown to have a lot of efficacy in healthy adult populations. And ongoing trials are still ongoing to learn more about the efficacy and to ensure safety. But they have been really robustly tested. And so three reasons to get vaccinated is to protect yourself from getting sick. Right, we talked about this, that you're basically making your superheroes. And to prevent spreading the virus to other people, as a transmission expert, I will say that there is very little evidence that once you are vaccinated that you will then transmit the virus. If we take influenza as an example, there's very little transmission from vaccinated populations. And you protect individuals who cannot get vaccinated for whatever reason. And so I'm not going to go into the variants and people can ask questions about that. I'll go ahead and move over into, I'll stop sharing and let Tui, Dr. Boy, talk about the vaccines and the rollout.
I want to share screen. Are you seeing my that? Okay, I'm just gonna, just take a little bit of time. I'm gonna go through, I don't think I need to go. So I'm gonna focus on maybe some special populations. Pregnancy, we get a lot of questions whether pregnant woman increase to get the vaccine or not. We know that pregnant woman are increased risk for severe illness. There may be increased risk for preterm birth as well. But we have limited data, but human studies are underway. So far, in animal study, we did not find any safety concerns for the Moderna vaccine. So getting vaccinated is a personal choice. Kind of looking at the benefits and the risks. For many of my childbearing age patients, we talk about this. And usually the benefits of getting vaccinated, I think outweigh the risks at this point. And there is no evidence of infertility connection. Breastfeeding, again, we don't have a lot of data on whether there's transmission of virus or antibody. But we know that there's some other scenario that there is potential benefits that antibodies can be passed through breastmilk to the baby. There is no virus in the vaccine at all. So there's no concern that the mother could pass the virus to the nursing infant. And lastly, in children, I think, you know, you know that children have been the age group least likely to die from covid nineteen. The Pfizer vaccine has been approved for ages sixteen years and older. The Moderna vaccine is for eighteen years and older. Both Pfizer and Moderna began enrolling children twelve years or older. So we hope that the results will be out in late spring. And if that looks good, then they will study the lower age group from five to eleven. I think I will stop there.
Thank you so much for a wonderful presentation. I really love the aspect about how policies change in vaccines didn't. I think that's a really important point to hit with a lot of people being really concerned with how fast vaccines were produced. Thank you both. Moving forward, we have Dr. Andrea Fox from School Health Center. She's a medical chief officer. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Well, thank you so much for having me. I'm really honored to be here. I'd like to start off by recognizing the high level of infection in Bhutanese community. I know the community has really suffered from this illness. And we have tried to work as active partners in both testing and now moving forward to vaccinate the population. But I just wanted to recognize that. I also wanted to recognize that I know that the Bhutanese population in Pittsburgh are highly accepting of vaccines. And we vaccinate your kids and you. And that the acceptance of the coronavirus vaccine has also been high. And that I think is a reflection of, you know, that your recognition of how much, how much those diseases are very harmful to the population in general. I also want to agree with Gita and the two other presenters that it is such good news that we have this vaccine. I mean, it's just been not even a year since the first cases are in the United States. And it really is somewhat of a miracle that we have these vaccines. So I'm going to talk about my experience as a center where we have been able to give the vaccine. So as a vaccine provider in the community right now. It has not been the smoothest of rollouts. I know there's a lot of anticipation and anger and frustration in getting vaccines. And but every day that I'm frustrated and angry that it's very bumpy, I have to say to myself, yeah, but it's a miracle that we have it at all. So if the School Health Center and actually family qualified health centers in general have been targeted to be providers of the vaccine. And that is because we are kind of seen as the experts in reaching harder to reach communities. And so all our efforts around giving vaccines has not been around easy groups to vaccinate. You know, people who are going to be able to register online and show up at PNC Park, but on people who have to work all day long and don't have control over their schedules and have access issues in terms of transportation or language difficulties in registering online. So that has been kind of our focus. Certainly, the first few weeks of the vaccine were limited to providing it to healthcare providers. Fortunately, we were able to consider caregivers as a group of healthcare providers. And we have moved forward in vaccinating many of the caregivers, including family caregivers in the Bhutanese community. And we continue to do that. So one of the difficulties we've had has been we really have no idea from week to week how much vaccine we're going to get. And that has really limited our ability to plan for our vaccine program. So we, we started out slow. We got two hundred that just showed up on our doorstep one day without anyone telling us about it. And then the next week we would get none. And then the next week we would get eight hundred and the next week. So it's very, it makes it very hard to plan. But in the last few weeks, it's evened out quite a bit. And we have moved forward making regular vaccine times in the community. And I know you guys might not know about that yet, but we hopefully do plan to eventually have walk-in clinics where people don't have to make an appointment. We'll do them just like we've been doing the vaccine, the testing in the community where people can just, won't have to go online or make a phone call, but will just be able to walk in and get a vaccine. Of course, that means that some people towards the end of the day might be very disappointed because we will run out. But we think it's the best way to reach the number, the highest numbers of people in the very communities. We are also providing vaccines through house calls in senior high rises. And we continue to want to just fulfill our mission in reaching the very hard to reach people with our vaccine program. So you may not have heard about it yet in the community more broadly. But I want to reassure you that our plans do include working with you to make sure that we can vaccinate as many people in your community as possible. I just wanted to also say that, you know, there are a lot of people who did, who are infected, who have the infection in that community. And that it is still important to get vaccinated even if you have had the infection. So we don't really know how long the vaccines work yet just because it hasn't been that long since people have been getting vaccinated, but that that research will come. But we do know that more than three months after a natural infection, that your resistance to getting the virus again, and particularly the variants that are around, wanes. And so it is really important that even if you have had the infection, if it's, you know, at least sometime out, that you do get the vaccine. That's all I'm going to say for now.
Thank you so much, Dr. Fox. That's, and thank you for continuous efforts in helping vaccinate our community. Now I want to pass on to Dr. Non-Doc, Ashok Gurung, to summarize a little of what we've talked about. I think we are finally live on Facebook. So please take it over.
Thank you, Kida Veni. So this is only just to interpret in summary, like whatever I had. I think it was difficult to go word by word and it may take time. Hello, everyone, by the way. So I will start from Dr. Seema, Dr. Wara. So what she, whatever she mentioned, but I'll try to make it short. Yes, Namaste. Manipali ma chata maya lay abo one doctor. So le jum kura dakhno bhai, tina na doctor le kura dakhis. No bhaatcha, tiu pura chima, chhoti nai pani ma bandin chu. Poi lu guru chia bawa one, Seema, La, Wa, Le, Banthi, Unthi. Kei samay agari amli covid nineteen kura garte chiu bani, aile aira, sorry. Amri Gita bende bana bhaasa, aile cha ami covid nineteen vaccine kura garte chiu. Aba aile bhai vaccine kura gada, here ching. Tap Seema le banu bhaiyo, one cha bai, 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 abo. You, vaccine mani kusui, kusui kasey pana hi, banda kaise, kusui kuching. Kere, kei bhai rasuncha, kitadu, kitadu ko mathi kara uncha. Tiu kara la ni kade, kasi ma lagai chats. Tiu kara lagao, kasi hamro sorry le chai. Kere ahho, kitadu aisa, bani tha pay pachari chit. Teyan dhi pachari, sorry le, apnu sorry ma tu, rok songa, larni, pratiratna, shakti bancha. Ti tiu banaucha, turuntay, tes lai chit, T-cell ra B-cell bancha. Ani B-cell chai alik sorry ma la mo samay raha ni bhai, kale gara, telai memory bani, memory, B-cell bani bancha, juj, juj, juj ko artha ho, boli gara, firi pani kitadu de akramon garta. Haisa B-cell cha athar, e firi ayo, bane ra ni tiu ching, tu firi akramon gana, tir laxa. Ratu, kitadu le mahay diincha, tes le gara, telai chit superhero bane ra, wali bante, bantiho. Chhotma wali bana bhaatyo, ani aur kura ching. Aba poi le cha, laga, laga, kere chha bhaasa lagni, abo you, vaccine banu, sweet banu, tiki samay, lakte bani, aile ching, sab, pai jana sasta karmi, ruda lagi, parira, kere tes ma, bike ni kura, lagi parira, gara, haisa, chhotu samay ma, yu sambha bahay kosa, baino. Ani aur kura mali bana bhaatyo, chama gari cha prakaar ko, company pa, nikli ko, vaccine aru cha. Duita ching, aita Pfizer bhai, aur ko mode nakko, ani aur ko cha AstraZeneca bana bhaasa. Or chhotu ching, Johnson and Johnson ko, duita, duita, chep, chep, aai poyga, bani, Pfizer mode na cha, aile, suigo rukma aai gocha, bazaar ma, hami de lau bhai chung, bana bhaatcha. Ani, tes na ali, kud, achi, next, Dr. Tui Buie, bana bhaatyo. Bishe gara, jati bani, kere gur, gur, bati, mela, lau ni, na lau ni, bana bhaatyo. Ani gur bati mela, lai ching, abo, tes to samashe ki na, dahe gula, gara, hiri, risk, abo. Alikati bori samama, na, ta, shodhi cha, tarabani, launda, hiri, tes le asar gara, dena, ra, aile ko, hamro upaya, bani, lau ni, na ira, bhaatcha, bana bhaatcha, aina. Ani aur kura cha, bishe gara, mode na ma, jaans pani garna bhai, mode na, suiba, tes ma, kuni, prakaar ko, samashe aru, na, bhaat, kale, gara, hiri, tiu, kere, launda, huncha, bani bhaiyo. Ani aur kura cha, abo tiu, lagai pachari, hami, rokhon bancho, atap, bacha jamana, shodhi na, infertile huncha, bani, kura aru bana bhaatyo. Taratiu chikuni bani, adyan, anushana, na, pai, kale, gara, hiri, tiu ching, launa, milcha. It is ma, tes tu, kuni samashe, chaina, bana bhaatcha. Ra mode na lai ching, mode na vaccine cha, eighteen years dekhi, mati kura launchan, bani. Pfizer vaccine cha, fourteen years dekhi, mani kura launcha, bana bhaatcha. Roy, abo, hamri School Hill Health Center, Dr. N.T.Fox, hami sabhi de janda, samay lai. Wali bana bhaatyo, hamre bhutanis, mo, daima, infection, june, sankraman ko, matra, sankya, ali, badi cha. Ani, aile aira, ching, abo, kere, aur kura, ramro, kura cha, firi bhutanis, mo, dairi, suilaun, bani, tayaar cha. Jodji garam, tayaar cha, june, guru cha, ramro, baniho. Aba, poi le, suilaun, kura ma cha, dhi, avchun, aati, rasa, hamis sanga, juste, abo, poi le, abo, kuni, dinsa, abo, kere. Abo, bana, poi le, kura, abo, hamile, kati kam gana, manchira, chau, ani, register gana, online, pani, garo, uncha. Asago samashe, language problem, aina, sang sangai, abo, kere, abo. Koi, kai, 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 ching, sujani, na, bai, na, bai, kana, kere, suia, idini, kui, dinsa, abo, suina, na, uni. Juste, wali, example, kedi, na, bhai, bani, ekchuti, ching, dui sai ko, matra, ma, suia, aakut, tiu, aur ko, hafta. Abo, dui, dui sai ko, matra, ma, jankari, na, bai, na, bai, kana, aai, kere. Aur ko, choti, aur ko, hafta, aao de, aina, tes, hafta, ma, ase, aire. Ra aile, alikati, bori, gali, gara, hami, agari, borda, chhot karima, bana, bada. Boli gara, School Hill Health Center, le cha, walking clinic, ba, banaunchan, jate, abo, sabai lai, lagao, bani, sojini, uncha. Juste, chit, darta, gara, bani, garo, bhai, rasa, bani, kura, gana, bhaatcha. Chhotma, iti, ne, thank you.
Thank you so much. That was a wonderful summary. Moving forward, we have Dr. Yadu Dital. He's a community member and he's a MD candidate from Georgetown University School of Medicine. Thank you so much for joining us and we look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, first of all. I'm not doctor yet, but thank, thank you so much for inviting me. I will try to summarize some of the Bitcoin that was made earlier in Nepal. And I'll add some point that I have commonly misunderstood by my community in Pittsburgh and across the country. Namaskar, Sabhi Jhaalai, Nepal, I'm Bulnachir. Aki, pali, doctor, le, tere, kura, one, works, tes ma, tere, mukkam, kura, mappu, ni, firi, summarize, kara, chaancho. Asa, tai, sat, sat, a, oli, kura, ta, milis, American, community ma, deri, sunegi, chiu, ma, Moderna, vaccine, laun, ki, Pfizer, laun, ki, kitam, alim, Moderna, available, bhaakus, ma, Pfizer, la, parker, bost, ki. You, deri, my, sunegi, chiu, isko, my, raka, chhot, clear, gana, chaancho. Aile, US ma, aile, saman, duita, vaccine, apra, bhai, chau. Moderna ra Pfizer. And dui, duita, vaccine, ekki, prakaar le, kam, garsa. Ani, uta, vaccine, jun, chii, Pfizer, tes, poi li, nae, upal of the boy, katiu, tes ko, barama, deri, allah, chal, katiu. And espechadi, Moderna, ko, barama, amli, sunno, thaliun. Tar, yu, dubai, vaccine, le, ekki, prakaar le, kam, garsa, jun, mRNA, vaccine, bani, cha. Chale, chi, hamr ko, tap, aile, dekno, bhaakut, tiu, la, agi, picture, na, dekno, bhaiyo. Coronavirus ko, picture, tes ma, spike protein, bani, uncha. Tiu, banaun, kala, gi, soy, garna, totwa, alikuncha. Chale, gara, che, hamri, kuj, kusai ni, jun, le, che, immunis, system, bani, cha. Fight, garna, kala, gi, soy, garsa. Your vaccine, duita, vaccine, usteh, prakaar le, kam, garsa, firi, bina, bana, chaancho. Udharan, kala, gi, tap, aile, Coca-Cola, atau, Pepsi, sunba, kala, brand, different, mo, test, kada, her, usteh, uncha. Estehal ko, Pfizer, Moderna, tap, aile, kon, pahnu, uncha, yadi, eligible, uncha, bani, junai, vaccine, banaun, sakshun, uncha. Isko, kuni, difference, haru, thore, difference, haru cha, aki, aru, doctor, le, bana, bhai, katiu. Pfizer vaccine, Pfizer vaccine, ching, ke, cha, bani, esma, ching. Alikati, temperature, iska, laki, kanti, temperature, na, rakhna, parni, uncha. Tiu, ralkadi, bana, kala, aai, garo, parni, sakcha. Tar, jun, thama, available, bhai, kuncha, wale, setar, ko, rukma, rakhna, bhai, kuncha. Tiu, rata, pahle, jaa, jaa, uncha, Pfizer, available, cha, laun, sakshun, cha. Aur ko, difference, ke, cha, bani, Pfizer, ching, tap, aik, ko, fourteen years, dehi, ubo, ko, umar, kalaai, laun, sakchincha. Tar, Moderna, chii, eighteen, abo, kala, mati, approv, bhai, chau. Tiu, point, ma, ekdam, deri, sam, American, samaj, ma, sunegi, kuna, le, mali, clear, pad, gana, clear, gana, hujiko. Aur ko, kura, june, cha, Dr. Fox, seven, bana, bhaiyo. Ma, lai, poi li, nae, infection, bhai, cha, chau, makin, vaccine, lagun, ma, sang, immune, chaina, bani, prasman, deri, aaksar. Community ma, isko, pani, aki, doctor, le, bano, bano, bhaaj, stai, tap, aile, laun, ekdam, jari, uncha. Kina, bani, aile, research, ma, patala, ansar, ekki, infection, hoda, hiri, ninety days, saman, mati, immune, una, sakchincha. Bana, patala, bhaag, samar, le. Ani, aile, vaccine, ke, investigation, thaali, sakka, pishigana, thaali, kala, buk, chha, maina, on, the body, bhaag, cha. Aile, saman, sabai, jana, lai, immune, bhai, epde, hai, gasa. Tiu, kara, naga, gara, hiri, vaccine, vaccine, lau, da, kiri, la mo, samay, saman, che, tap, aile, lai, rok, dekhi, laun, sakne, chha, mata, milna, sakcha. Cha, jaa, ki, tap, aise, infection, da, hiri, tiu, chha, mata, nobe, din, saman, mati, pugna, sakchio. Ani, aur ko, prasman, ki, aana, gara, gis, banae, vaccine, ma, lai, bar, khare, covid, bhaak, cha. Ma, bimari, ni, chiu, vaccine, laun, ki, na, laun, ki, prasman, deri, aaksar. Smach, ke, garna, person, ke, garna, parni, uncha, banae, tap, aile, jun, isolation, period, sakchincha. Espechadi, tap, eligible, uncha, tap, aile, worker, uncha, atwa, sixty-five, abo, un, bhai, cha, chau. Age, age, le, tap, aile, qualified, garsa, tap, aile, laun, sakshun, cha. You, poi li, poi li, new, serma, sunno, bhaak, thola, laun, parda, na, bani, tu, chikna, kara, le, ke, kara, banae. Vaccine, thore, matra, available, bhaag, cha, ninety, din, saman, immune, immune, le, kam, garsa, banae. Ki na, chii, immune, already, bhaak, ma, chilai, dine, bani, prasna, aai, kuna, lagar, da, hiri. News ma, test, kura, sunno, sakshun, bhai, kuna, sakcha. Tar, tarabani, tap, laun, parda, uncha. Ani, aur ko, uta, last, last, common, kura, haru, milis, ne, ko, ma, ma, aur ko, clear, gara, clear, gana, chaancho. Jun, chai, ke, kes, na, ma, aaksar, banae, vaccine, le, gara, da, kiri, covid, laksa, ma, lai, bani, pani, deri, cha, samay, aaksar. Amr ko, amr ko, samma, ma, back. Top my life. Ah, I like.
Thank you so much. Very useful information. Moving on, Hambro, we have Anita Sharma. She is a COVID nineteen epidemiologist at Allegheny County Health Department. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you, Gita. Hello, everyone, and namaste, namaste, Savijanali. My name is Anita Sharma and I work as a COVID epidemiologist at the county health department. Everyone has said such great things and just to echo everyone, it is a definite blessing. COVID nineteen. COVID nineteen has affected all of our lives around the world. So it is a blessing to have a vaccine currently. We have heard about the effectiveness of the vaccine, the planning on distribution and everything, but I do want to emphasize that everyone should be vaccinated when it is your turn and because we have limited supply as discussed earlier. Please know different phases that are available and that are listed in, you know, department of health websites, CDC websites and other resources to figure out whether you are eligible to get vaccinated or not. I think we are all in this battle together, so we all have to, you know, make a choice. Outweigh the benefits versus risk, you know, so we have learned about how effect, how much effectiveness COVID nineteen vaccine is, so please vaccinate. Even after you vaccinate as a COVID epidemiologist, I do want to emphasize continue to wear a mask, maintain social distancing. And wash your hands often, hands and use hand sanitizer until a majority of the people in our community are vaccinated. So, you know, everyone is protected until then. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. That's very helpful advice. I want to shift a little bit of this conversation to the people who have already gotten their first dose of vaccine or second dose of vaccine. I think we do have quite a few amount of people, especially your elderly and healthcare givers who have been vaccinated. So I just wanted to point out that the vaccine only truly works up until ninety five percent. Two weeks after your second dose. So up until that is extremely crucial that you still you know, stay as protected as you were before. Very, very careful. Or go. Smartphone, phone code tool. As normal. So you'll be fine as normal. Vaccine. Insurance. It's free. And lastly, symptoms, common symptoms. So. Recently. So it's very close. So this is a really good news for a lot of people in our community. So, yeah. Presentation. After vaccination. It's the one day.
Let me add one thing. Dr. We was just mentioning about continuing preventive measures. About.
Thank you.
Can I add a few things on that? I want to add on why we have, we need to wear a mask after we have vaccine. I think it's really important to understand that. Let me talk in Nepali. So. Best allow no card. Or. And yeah, the. Two.
Thank you. We have a question or a question. Are there any side effects to this vaccine? Your vaccine. Doctor.
Thank you, Benny.
Thank you. Our good question. Is the vaccine equally effective even if the person does not get fever or pain?
Yeah.
Um, thank you. Facebook Live. Please question. The questions. So Facebook. Please comment. Or question. Covid vaccine first dose. Are you more question? If you get the first dose of vaccine, but you get COVID nineteen before you get the second dose, can you still get the second dose?
Doctor City could just speak with, I think that'd be better than writing because sometimes we'll miss your writing, please.
Seema, would you like to answer that question?
Sure. I think you're gonna have to talk to their physician right now. The, the, the regulation is such that you cannot get a vaccine within three months of having had COVID. So if you get your first dose, the time between your doses right now for the Pfizer is twenty one days, Moderna is twenty eight days. If you get the, if you get COVID in between then, you should not get the second dose because you will have had COVID within those three months. But you should discuss about whether you should then have a delayed dose again. There is some nice data coming out that if you had COVID and then you get a single dose. Your antibodies are almost as high. We're talking about those antibodies are about as high as after two doses. So it does act as like a nice boost, but that, but all of this is sort of moving currently happening. But I would, I would encourage you that if you do get COVID, not to go for the second dose, but to tell, talk to your doctor first.
Thank you so much. We have another question.
Sorry, do you want me to interpret that first? Just want to be like up to, up to date.
Thank you. Our question, this is for Dr. Lakdala. We heard in news that COVID variant is detected in Allegheny County. Could current vaccines work for the variant and anyone have any more details?
This is kind of important and these, there are a lot of variants that are going to emerge. So kind of just taking a step back, this is an RNA virus. And RNA viruses mutate. That's what they do. So it isn't really a surprise that we are seeing changes in the genome that are going to occur when people get infected. The question about whether the vaccine is still effective at protecting somebody from a variant is really good. And I will say that when we, remember we talked about the vaccine makes both B cells and T cells, right? There's a lot of superheroes that are happening in your body. And so that means that you have not just one way of protecting yourself, but lots of ways. And so the studies to look at whether the vaccines, all of them are still effective against the variant are ongoing because these are all happening in real time. But there is strong evidence that many of the vaccines are still neutralized by serum from people that are vaccinated. There may be a decrease in the titers. But one of the important things is we don't know what the correlate of protection is. And what that means is we don't know how much antibody we need to have in our bodies or what types of T cells we need to have in order to be protected. This is why it's really important for us to get the full vaccine dose. So that you can have this boost and you can have these high levels of both memory T cells and B cells and circulating antibodies. I hope that answers that question.
Question was that COVID variant.
Sorry, I got it. No, thank you.
Um, Gita. Um, DB. After how many days of COVID infections is advisable to get the COVID vaccine?
My understanding is the recommendation is three months. If you had COVID, you have to have had it three months prior to getting the vaccine. If you've had it within three months, you shouldn't get the vaccine, but I think maybe one of the physicians on the call may want to speak to that more.
I don't think it's a very firm rule. So I, having been vaccinating with the county, we I mean, we have vaccinated people before the three months. It's all depend on kind of when they sign up and stuff. So it's not a strict rule that say that, you know, you cannot be vaccinated before three months.
Yeah, the screening from the tool from the CDC just asked two weeks actually.
Yeah.
Whether you've had infection, you know, two weeks post being positive. So that's kind of what we've been following.
Right.
Uh, Gita. Comment. I think it's not a question, it's a comment or it must be a comment. I have done. It is from. But I have done two doses of doses, but after that I have still itches on my body. So that's like having some kind of itching symptoms after two vaccines. I think that is a comment.
Yeah, we've seen a variety of kind of what I would call late effects, a lot to do with kind of.
Allergic type of reactions on the skin. Sometimes, actually, there was just a report today in the New England Journal, which I have also seen, is that. Um, sometimes weeks after the vaccine and the site that you got the arm, that you can get a circular rash there. Um, and, you know, we have been vaccinated a lot on our patients, so we get a lot of calls about these various effects that people have. Um, and in general, our, um, response is just to say, well, you know, it'll probably go away. Um, and just to treat it symptomatically. Uh, but yeah, uh, this, um, kind of what I would call hives is, seems to be on one of the side effects. Uncomfortable, I would say.
Yes, I agree, um, the experiences usually they will resolve. Uh, and then we just treat the itching with like an antihistamine of some sort, depending on how bad it is. Um, if it's persistent and really bad, especially if we call it hives. Um, we probably need to get that person seen by, could be by an allergist, um, needed.
Uh, process. Those who. Pats. Me. Sorry. Okay. But. I'm. And. Some. Good. Okay. Okay. But. Uh, Dr. Go. To. Use. Some. Jants. Vivina. Man. See. Sorry. My. For. Pretty. To. Jani. Got. So. I like. What. The. July. I. Really. Some. I. I. Side. Anti histamine. To. Hello. For. Other. This. Uh, who. Need. The. Allergens. Uh, allergies. Someone. Somebody. Business. Doctor. This. Also. The. House. Check. Um, I'm. Time. She. This. I guess. But. Question. There is a question on the Facebook. Um, COVID vaccine, is it mandatory or voluntary? Uh, hurry no funny, but I could press. That's a question from hurry no funny. Is COVID vaccine mandatory or voluntary? To the doctors.
Voluntary.
It is voluntary, um, but I think that it's going to happen that at certain work sites, that it'll eventually become mandatory, just like the flu shot is, or. Getting heavy vaccine. Um, right now, um, since it's a, it's under this emergency approval, it isn't actually approved, approved. Um, initially, there was a feeling that you couldn't make it mandatory, but the federal government has said that work sites are allowed to make it mandatory.
I would say it's also our responsibility. Okay, uh, Gita, are you able to see questions coming on the Facebook?
Yes, that's the last question I saw on Facebook.
There is a, there is a question from Kaganabara, if you can see.
Yes, I see it, okay. Another question we have is what is the major difference between Pfizer and Moderna? I think we're gonna reroute this back to Doc, uh, Yadu. I think he answered, Mr. Yada Dital, I think he answered that earlier.
Uh, I. Listen. Very. Some. I. Gonna. Chance. Uh, modern era Pfizer. The pain. I'm. Colaki. Evil. But. Just. Uh, again. Perhaps. Coke. Mama. Difference. Two thousand. Just. Brand. But. This. This. Only. I like. Technical. Not. Difference. No. The. Tell. Well. The. Come. Where.
Thank you. Um, another question we have is, um, when will we get to, um, get vaccinated through a doctor? Coily, doctor, PCP, doctor, but it's even now no pains, uh, timeline.
So the problem right now with being vaccinated in your own doctor's office, so we have an office, but we're not, uh, vaccinating there. Is that both the Pfizer and the Moderna have to be given within a certain amount of hours once you open up the vial. He, for the Moderna. Um, each vial contains approximately ten doses, we've been getting sometimes eleven, sometimes twelve out of them. Um, so we never, so you can't, um, open up a vial and then just give it to one person. You have to have at least ten people in order to do it, so it's very hard to just give it to. Let's say if you have, you don't really know how many people are going to show up in an office in a day to get it, so, um, eventually. When the, the vaccine is more plentiful, we won't have to worry so much. Um, unfortunately, I think it's fortunate, unfortunately, at least the Moderna vaccine has gotten permission to expand the number of, uh, doses. In a vial, so I think fourteen, which is only going to make it harder for us to give in the doctor's office. Uh, but eventually.
And, and once you get the vaccine out, uh, thaw out, you can't put it back, that's, that's the problem.
Yeah. Doctor, we also added. Never. I'll. Pfizer. Team. Tina. Pass. I can do. Modern. It's. Comment. So. There. Difference. Could. Yeah. Cry. Uncle. Sorry.
Uh, so. Sorry. Um, mother distract. Okay. Get a, uh, doctor. Office. My. My. Quick. Press. This. My. But. Doctor. Max. My. Here. Just. The. My. See. You're. Cool. The. Ticket. Those. Were. Sweet. Does. It. Didn't. Have. Nice. On. The. Last. My. To. Be. Sure. Actually. Until. Just. About. You. Now. She. Can. Of course. She. So. Them. Low. That. The. My. Conti. About. Tap. Ram. This. What. Nik. They're. It's. Like. Life. Okay. Pats. Cute. Somebody. They're. Really. For. I. Know. Me. Take. Any. That. I. Was. Modern. Pilot. Those. Were. About. Two. Ta. On. He. Don't. He. Boy. This. Is. The. Boli. I. Have. Some. The. Was. The. He. Some. But. He. Is. Some. But. He. Man. He. But. The. No. Big. Like. Matter. Gita, could you read the next question from Raghu?
Yes. Yes, um, Raghu Pakural said, can we do any contrast related procedure immediately after COVID shot?
It. It should not affect, that I know of, you mean like getting a, um, CAT scan with contrast, is that what you meant? It should not have any, uh, interaction or any effects on, on getting IV contrast, as long as you're not allergic to the IV contrast.
Yeah, the, um, the only injections that are really, so you can't get other kinds of vaccinations within two weeks of getting the vaccine. Um, so that is also asked on our screening question, so if you get a flu shot. On the, and the same day you're scheduled to get your COVID vaccine, they won't give you the COVID vaccine.
Uh, Raghu. The. Question. Uh, I'm. Sorry. My. Only. Pro. God. Or. The. Here. The. Contrast. Once. You. Uh, I'm. Sorry. I. I'm. Nepali. I. This. But. I'm. Live. Just. Go. The. She. But. This. To. Me. Me. Then. The. Kobe. Life. Pats. Are. You. This. My. Some. I. Know. You. To. Uh, just. About. Or. Pro. God. Who. Is. You. Or. Do. Hopta. Bit. Rob. And. I'm. Do. Hopta. Agar. It. Can. You. Launep. But. I. To. I. See.
Thank you, um, Ozzy, we have one more question from Purimaji. Uh, her question is, I heard those who have COVID positive, they have more side effects than others, is that true or possible?
Um, it is possible, but, um, it's, it's, I think it's different in different people, and so, um. And so I wouldn't say that you definitely, if you had COVID before and you get the shot, that you're going to have a lot of side effects. It doesn't always work like that, but the second dose is, does give a booster effect, so that's might be the reason why, um, the people have more side effects with the second dose.
Put. Me. So. Press. No. Uh, COVID. Like. Man. She. I. Was. You. Down. Body. Was. I. I'm. The. This. My. Oh. Key. I. Know. I'm. Uh, you. I. See. I'm. I. Know. I'm. I. I. But. I. Uh, pilot. Uh, vaccine. Log. Those. Log. I. See. This. I. Was. This. Sorry. My. Koi. Man. She. Is. The. I. Do. Need. I. San. Up. The. Song. Get. Had.[997.92]